It's four o'clock. Call for working meeting. Regular planning is on commission meeting. Three oh one more states courts, January twenty second, twenty nineteen, four p.m. And call for order, call a row.
One point to show our members of president.
Citizens Communications, we have, I believe, five people have signed up. So we public meeting, open meeting, so you'll have to know something appropriate time. Just remember that's a three-minute timeline for addressing. Commission speakers have one opportunity to speak during this time period. First item was agenda, is the consent agenda. The purple of the record, planning is on commission meeting of the record, twenty seven, twenty eighteen. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Motion has been made in seconded discussion. Question's been called, all in favor, raise your right hand. Minutes are approved. Moving into the public hearings and possible action. Hold a public hearing and consider possible action on a request to rezone approximately eight point four four acres, situated in H.W. Hurd survey abstract number three nine eight, Belle County, Texas, from historic district to public facility, generally located south and north of Post Park Road and east of I-35, also known as Post Park.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before we head into the three zoning cases, I thought I'd just provide you some supplemental information on the zoning process as a whole, just so as we go into this, we know kind of where we need to be headed and what we need to be thinking about. Your ordinance, your zoning ordinance sets out several items that the board, that the commission should be taking into account when they look at a zoning change. And I posted those in front of you on the screen and I'll just read through those. It says, "When considered a zoning change, the commission should consider the following: Whether the uses permitted by the proposed zip change will be appropriate in the immediate area concerned in their relationship to the general area and the village as a whole." Another thing you should consider is whether the proposed change is in accord with any existing or proposed plans for providing public schools, streets, water supply, sanitary service, and other utilities in the area. Another thing is, is the amount of vacant land currently classified for similar development in the vicinity and elsewhere in the village, and any special circumstances which may be a substantial part of such vacant land unavailable for development. Then you're also supposed to consider the recent rate at which demand is being developed in the same zoning classification as the zoning request, particularly in the vicinity of the proposed change. Also, you're supposed to consider how other areas designated for similar development will be or are unlikely to be affected if the proposed amendment is approved. And lastly, are there any other factors which will substantially affect the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare? You know, zoning is a tool that's used by cities basically to regulate land use, to establish compatibility. All of this, of course, being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, just thought I'd toss those ideas out and put those before you to keep in mind as you work through the cases tonight. This first case is what we classify as the Pace Park rezoning. The property description, as you pointed out, is just a little over eight acres, eight point four four to be exact. It's located along the Salado Creek Inn within the historic district, generally north and south of Pace Park Road. A future land use map, which is found in the city's comprehensive plan, currently shows the property designated as public park. The current zoning designation, however, is listed as historic district. So we're proposing to rezone the property, public facility, which permits public park. The justification for this rezoning is to zone the property in accordance with the comprehensive plan and also to match the properties historic use. As you know, we're obligated in the zoning process to send out notices to property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. We did so, and that amounted to twenty notices that went out. So far, we've only received one response back, and that was a response back from Mr. Morris Foster. His response was a notice of objection, saying he didn't understand why the city was doing this to local businesses. So with that said, this is the property description. We all know where Pace Park is, and the particular cases for you tonight for a public hearing and consideration of making a recommendation for the...
We're getting ready to move into the public hearing. Again, three-minute timeline for each person. Now Susan, to lead the timekeeper. First one, it's Mark. The fourth one was Jody Landis. Did I say your name right?
Landis.
This is on Pace Park.
This is on Pace Park, but I've also... Jody Landis, I live at ten twelve Mill Creek Drive. I apologize, I was not able to become as informed as I would like to on historic zoning. However, this is my concern if it's changed. I know that in most communities, historic zoning puts a lot of protections on properties. And my concern as a citizen is that if you change the zoning to park, that those protections would be lost. Because Pace Park is not a typical park like is found in most communities. It is unique to Salado, and it's one of the things that is so wonderful about Salado. That's my input I'd like to give, and then I'll be back on the network.
Thank you. Anyone else? First call, public hearing.
Linda Reynolds, five oh seven Santa Rosa, Salado. I feel strongly that zoning changes are dangerous and usually have ulterior financial motives and should be extremely clear to everyone. Anyone confused about a zoning change probably ought to think long and hard about even bothering to weigh in. I still don't understand why, I think Don and I disagree. The historic district in Salado is an overlay. From the one end of the town to the other, it is historic district. And within that district, you have restaurants, breweries, wineries, bed breakfast, retail. You have all kinds of different businesses and offices. I don't see any reason why you need to pull a part of the town out. And Pace Park is truly historic, as is the whole of the street, Main Street. It's truly historic. The land itself is historic, let alone the buildings. I don't understand why you have to take a piece of it out of the historic district and give it a different zoning. It can be zoned public facility within the historic district. And I think you've got to keep that phrase in there, or you're setting us all up for the Board of Alderman and Don to start taking properties out of the historic district and saying, "Oh, we're going to rezone them." For instance, the land up by College Hill, the Board of Alderman already signed a contract and said, "We're going to change that three acres near College Hill to commercial." Well, there were no hearings or anything, and they just did it. It's not been changed yet. But as soon as we get some parks pulled out of the zoning, a historic district, then you can take that three acres and say, "Oops, we need to change that to commercial." And you guys will be here with a room that's twice as full of people in the story, from the historic society. I just want to warn you, I do think that if you're going to change it to public facility, it ought to be public facility within the historic district, as Jody said, to protect it, to protect the land and the neighbors.
Darlene Walsh, one zero zero one Mill Creek Drive. Just, I wasn't planning to say anything, but a follow-up to what Linda just said. In case any of you didn't realize the difference between commercial and retail. Because everything currently, the way things are zoned now in town, everything from Fowler House to Morris Foster's tip of his land on South Main Street and Center Circle, World Street to Center Circle and around Center Circle is zoned in this historic overlay, okay? But it's all zoned retail, retail. Retail means you can have a house in it, there are people who live like big weeds on Main Street. You can have offices, you can have businesses, retail businesses. But you cannot have a drive-through restaurant or a gas station. Those are considered right now, commercial, commercial. So there is a big difference between the word "commercial" and the word "retail", which all the straight district now is retail. Also, all the land on West Village Road is retail. It's, we only had two properties ever zoned commercial. And when you say "commercial," we can talk about car lots, you know, you'd start zoning things commercial. Car lots, used car lots, sales car lots, welding shops, pipe shops, things with all kinds of outdoor storage, which is what we didn't want when we did zoning initially. And I was part of the group that initially did zoning and the comprehensive plan. We didn't want to see the golden arches from Main Street, which is why we, well, we zoned it retail, not commercial. The only two properties not commercial initially were Fowler Garage, which, on Holler Road, and the old car wash. And it's gone because of the widening of the highway. So, it's zoned retail on West Village Road and on Thomas Arnold. It's very, we didn't want a lot of commercial in town. We knew it would happen outside of town, car lots and, you know, big, huge like Walmarts, anything over a certain square footage would also be commercial. So, but we didn't want to see a commercial building at the corner of Thomas Arnold and, and the access road. Because we talked a great deal about changing the zoning of the property along thirty-five, but then we decided, no, you know, if we do that, you're going to see Arby's and McGonaght's and Wendy's and everything right on Church Street, and you'll see it from Main Street. And is that really what we want? Well, it's up to you. It's up to all of you and to Board of Alderman to decide, what do we really want our town to look like in terms? Do we want it to look like Gerald or keep it like Salado? Thank you.
Judy Fields, eight one eight Blaylock Circle, Salado, Texas. I'm currently the president of the Salado Historical Society, and we are very concerned about any zoning changes. And I am speaking to all intelligent people that, you know, once you start making changes, sometimes you bite off a little piece of this, you bite off a little piece of that. You set a precedent, and it's hard to go back and deny the next person. When you did it for them, you have to do it for me. When you can ask anybody, "Why do you come to Salado?", it's because of the charm, the ambiance, and the history that we have to offer. When you say you're from Salado, when I go to Georgetown, or Austin, or anywhere else than Temple, Waco, what a beautiful little village you have. Please help us to maintain that. And it is y'all's responsibility to help us do that. I appreciate your service and your concern in keeping this little village historic. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing is closed. Record session.
Sir, can I respond just very quickly to some of the comments? Because I think I'm adding some confusion. Property is zoned individually. It's not typically zoned by overlay district. It's zoned through separate zoning action that's assigned to district designation. And in this situation, the way this city's zoning is set up, is our property, this particular property individually is zoned historic district. In our comprehensive plan, we also have the definition or an outline of a historic district in broadest sense of terms, a historic area, for lack of a better phrase. This property is not being taken out of that, that historic area that, I think we've talked at the comprehensive plan many times, by going in and actually designating that as a formal overlay. But right now, in our code, our code lists historic district just like it lists S F seven, or just like it lists, you know, our other zoning, zoning categories. It's a designated historic district, not an overlay. So with that said, there's a little bit of confusion, I think, that I've seen and heard between what a zoning district is versus what an overlay is. An overlay is typically an area that is defined in which you place additional regulations on top of those regulations that the zoning district puts in place. Translation, if you had property that was zoned retail down along the creek, and you wanted to put in a water protection overlay, you had the ability to come in and put in a water protection overlay district which incorporates several properties into an area that's sensitive, that you feel like you want to place additional environmental regulations on to protect the creek and those type of things. Historic district, much the same. If you do an overlay, you're going to put additional regulations on top of the regulations that exist right now for historic district. We don't have a historic overlay right now. We have a historic area that's called out in the complaint, and we're not changing that. In fact, I think we're expanding that, at least that's what the committee's talking about right now. So, that's number one. Number two, this particular park has some special protection than any other public park. And that is, this particular park was put in the Pace family, and is by court order obligated to be maintained as a public park, you know, by this village now. There was action taken by the courts, what, within the last twelve to sixteen months, that basically assigned the village as the sole trustee of the park after a group of very strong citizens for years served as trustees of the Pace Park. And now it's the village's obligation or responsibility. We have representatives of those organizations that were involved in serving as trustees that are part of the Pace Park Advisory Board and making recommendations and advice to the village board itself. You know, there, there's tons of history in that park that we have nothing but plans to enhance and to educate people about it, to preserve and protect. So, that fear shouldn't exist. It is protected through court as far as that situation goes. And this is simply to try to identify the land use that we're talking about. And that is to call it a public facility where a public park is permitted.
Will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of Pace Park with the proviso that it remain with the historic designation. Is that allowed? Hold on.
It's going to be, the answer to the question is, realistically, there's not a historic overlay right now. It is in the historic area. I think I would say is, with the, I'm recommending that, I recommend this zoning change with the understanding that it's going to remain in the historic area that designated historic district. In the comprehensive. That's probably plain as weather.
Is there a second?
It's not a condition, it's just with the understanding that it's in that area right now and is staying. It's in the center of that area.
I'm not sure I understand why the, the, the...
Well, because right now, it's a public park. And historic district is not a public park land use.
Well, if I can mention that, I'm on the Pace Park Committee. And if it's a public park, we are much better able to apply for grants. And it's just cleaner to apply for grants.
And I think it also falls more in line with the court obligation you have to maintain it as a public park. And specifically calls it as a public park in court. So it's, it's an additional reason.
Parks, public and private are permitted in historic districts.
Right. But our point is, we feel it's necessary from a court standpoint, from court designation, you know, and with its historic use that we designate it as such. And that is, it's a public park, it's a public facility.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Second. Motion has been made, seconded discussion.
Does the Pace Park Board really feel that they can perform and utilize the park and get grant funding as well as they could?
Well, I think, I think this is an instance where, as we move forward in the village, it is important to have a designated park happen. Because as we grow as a village, we are going to add more parks. And we need to have that designated park called.
Created and designated building called and created and designated park. The placement of a specific park. Why is this park not to be moved?
Because it is the centerpiece of our parks.
Okay, I think, if I can follow up, while yes, you're right in the fact that the historic district, it is a permitted use from public and private. The issue comes down to the fact that when you go after grant money from Texas Carson Law, like Susan's trying to point out is, they want assurances that it's going to remain that, and they want assurances that it's totally known as such. And, and probably the ultimate assurance from the city's standpoint is through the zoning designation. So that's it. The same thing if we were, if we were, if we had historic building. We want to have that building designated as historic district. Because when you start going after state funding, they're going to want to make sure that you have the proper zoning protections in place, and that is, there's no questions asked about whether it's a public park. Plus, we've got the court situation we're dealing with where it says it's not designated.
Well, why then the court stand? Let me see, but the courts moved it anyway. I don't know why you have to do this with the courts. You said you've got to keep it.
I, I think it, the concept is, the fact that the city is trying to do, is trying to, for lack of a better phrase, tie issues on this deal that the court has, has set up, or that the court has said make a public park, we're going to designate it as a public park or a, so there's no questions asked.
So, did I understand the motion properly? Designated a public facility with the caveat that it will remain within the historic historic overlay, ones that overlay and overlaying trade.
Right, yes. That is, that is a essential part of my motion.
So the understanding is, can we do it?
Do we have a timeline online on the comprehensive plan? Are we ready to...
Comprehensive plan update committee is in the final review of its recommendations. As a matter of fact, they were sent out today to them. And they're going through the process, starting tomorrow, going through all their changes that they've recommended to make sure they've all been properly documented and see if there's something missing in that. The hope is the fact that we'll be at the board for a workshop with PNC and Board of Alderman and the update committee sometime in February. You know, the idea that we'll be doing it, hopefully have those changes made in March. We have to go through the, the way that process is going to work is, there'll be a joint workshop with your board, Board of Alderman, and the complaint, all at, all at the same table. Then after that meeting, there will be a separate public hearing in consideration of this board to make a recommendation to Board of Alderman. And after that, Board of Alderman will have a public hearing to make a proposition. The whole process should be done in March.
Billy, can you wait on this until March?
It's clearly your priority to make that recommendation. Now, you have, you have this... The overlay, that implication is, is sometime, it may be an overlay. It'll, it'll, what it'll do is, it'll formally and officially designate the property within the boundaries of the historic overlay district. Right now, the comprehensive plan sets out a historic area where these properties within it are zoned historic district. And this property sits in that historic area right now, it's in the center.
Do you want to amend on that? I, we have got a second first.
We have a second, we have a discussion.
Speak up, please.
Nobody can hear you. We're trying to decide how to proceed.
I guess if we speak, if we can make sure we speak into the microphones of the audience.
I have a question.
Question has been called.
All in favor?
Raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we table items A and B until the new comprehensive plan has been approved.
You'll need to take up those items individually, to make that motion individually. But from a tabling standpoint, you really, if you're going to table it for more than a couple of weeks, which you will be tabling for in a couple of weeks, let the motion die. And because the kicker is, it's a public notice provision, and when you table something, it continues to the next, and the next, and the next until it's heard.
Okay.
Typical rule is, if you're...
I draw my motion.
Yeah, if you're not going to be doing something within the next couple of weeks, just let it die.
Okay.
Any...
Moving to item B. Hold a public hearing, consider possible action according to request to rezone approximately one point one eight acres, situated in the T. Spender Hurd survey abstract number three nine eight, Belle County, Texas, from historic district to public facility, generally located south of Salado Creek and north of College Hill Drive, east of First State Thirty-five, west of Main Street. More specifically, going as Serena Park.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead and brief you on this particular situation. This is Serena Park as we know it. It's that one point one acre tract located along the Salado Creek Inn within historic area, historic district, north of College Hill Drive, east of I-35, and west of Main Street. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan calls it out as public park, much like the previous situation that, that we're dealing with. This is a public park. And so, our, our concept here is, we'd like to see this particular park properly zoned as a public park, public facility. It's currently zoned historic district. The justification for rezoning is to bring things into compliance with the comprehensive plan and also to match the properties historic use. In this particular case, only six properties actually fell within the two hundred foot notification area. We received one response, and that was, again, from Mr. Foster, who came out and expressed his opposition and didn't understand why we were doing this to local businesses. So it's for you for consideration, public hearing and consideration.
The public hearing is now open. There is no sign, people to sign up for speaking. Public hearing is now open.
Linda Reynolds, five oh seven Santa Rosa, Salado. I want to make mention that, I would think that if Pace Park is interested in grants, if Pace Park was also historic district, you get quite a many. There, there's all kinds of funds for historic district grants.
Mr. Robson, we're talking about Serena Park and not Texas Park.
Oh, yes. And I want to mention again, I don't understand why we can't put in the ordinance that's going to come about this change, that instead of going to, from historic district to public facility, and it doesn't say public park, it says public facility, which may mean just about, I don't know what a public facility, does that mean a sewer plant? Does that mean, I, I, I don't know, telephone lines and extra things? I think probably even more historic than Pace Park has got to be the land along from Stagecoach there, and to turn that into a public facility and take it out of historic district. I think it's, something's wrong. I don't understand why we can't do from whatever the land is to public facility, if you must, in the historic district. Then later down the line, if everybody insists on changing from historic district to historic overlay so that you can take properties out and change the zoning on them, that's the way the town wants to go, then so be it, but let's do it out in the open, no hidden agendas. Let's keep this public facility, if you must, to, in the historic district for right now. Because that's where we are right now.
Any other, anyone else want to make a presentation?
Darlene Walsh, one zero zero one Mill Creek Drive. I, I brought this up before, if you, and I know Don addressed it. But if you look on Bell CAD, that, that is, that's not the, it's got one ID number for a one large, one, one chunk of land, I think it's over three acres or two and a half something. But it's more than just that little square or rectangular shape. And, and he said, well, in his response, the last time I brought it up was, you can, you can change zoning on, in one piece of property, for part of one property. you can change zoning on, in one piece of property, for part of one property, you don't have to change the whole zoning for one entire property, you can split it up, he said. But that's not what happened when they zoned the Eight Lakes property for Mr. Hanks. The Eight Lakes property, they, they zoned that without any regard to the future land use plan, while this, while it was totally surrounded by residential area, and they rezoned that into mixed use, which means you could put anything there. A business right in the middle of San Juan, San Jose's, and all, and, and even the houses on, on, on the east side of College Hill. You know, they just, they made the whole Eight Lakes property mixed use without any regard. So they did it in that case, but they're not doing it in this case, and that's what I don't understand. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is John Gold, 1421 Old North Road, Slatto. One thing I've noticed about the area you're talking about right now, every summer, this seems to become a major resort. So I think you need to explain to the people the benefit of rezoning it versus leaving it the way it is now. I think that clearly is giving a lot of confusion. It's right, it looks like a public park. It doesn't look like a historic district. So if there's a benefit to rezoning a public park which stays more maintained, more controlled, that may be a good thing. But if you're not gonna do anything by rezoning it, leave it alone.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing is closed.
Larry, I'll jump in just in response to the sanctuary comments. I wasn't here, here in that situation, but it is not uncommon practice to zone portions of property different from other portions of property. It may also be not zoned by Bell CAD numbers.
I'll entertain a motion. What's the difference between this and the one we just covered?
In both, in both cases, the, the comp plan says they're public parks, and in both cases, we're trying to get them zoned as public parks.
It says facility.
Public parks is a permitted use in public facilities.
I'd like to make a motion. Yes, I'd like to, I just don't think about that one. I'd like to make a motion to.
If you want to do it today, the last one, the motion would be recommend to deny.
Yeah. Recommend to deny this rezoning request. At this time, nineteen. And we will wait until the comprehensive plan is ready with the historic district overlay and revisit it at that time. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Questions been called? All in favor? Make your right hand. I apologize to this one. I misunderstood the motions that you made on the previous. And I seconded your motion. And then I noted you were in contention. After spoken process, I didn't hear a motion.
Well.
My apologies, I didn't hear, but then see.
After all of our discussion, we decided we were going to waive the historic district overlay. And then we would revisit those two parks.
So your vote on this last one was denied?
Yes. It was four to one. Okay. Live in I O C, hold a public hearing and consider possible action regarding a request to rezone approximately 137.505 acres situated in the G F Lake survey, time track number 53 dash 1, Bell County, Texas, single family residential district to private recreation located at 1610 Club Circle in Slatto. More specifically known as the Mill Creek Golf Club.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, this is your third and final zoning case on this agenda. It is the rezoning, the proposed rezoning of the Mill Creek Golf Club. The property, I think most of us are familiar with, this is the golf course itself within the city limits. This does not include Serael Park, it does include the air club property, and then there's a maintenance facility that will be subsequently put through a rezoning process. We're focusing just on the golf course right now. Hundred thirty seven, one five oh five acres located at 1610 Club Circle. The property right now is designated in the future land use map as private recreation. The current zoning designation for the property is single family residential SF seven. The only way you have a golf course in SF seven is with conditional use permit, and no such permit exists right now. The proposed zoning designation is private recreation, which permits a private golf course and country club. That would bring it in compliance with the comprehensive plan's future land use map. The justification is, is to begin to bring it in line with the comp plan, and also to bring it in line with the property's historic use. It's been a golf course for well over thirty years. Public notice, we noticed some 273 properties within the 200 foot area of the subject property. To date, we've received, and we're still having them come in, we've received 27 written responses of the 27, 10 have been objecting to the proposed rezoning, 17 have been in favor. We're all familiar with the property, and I'll turn back up to you for a public hearing
We have several listed for public comments, and we'll have them first, and then other people who wish to speak. Public hearing is now open. Jody?
Jody Lander, 1012 Mill Creek Drive. I, my family owns three residential properties in Slatto. We are on Mill Creek Drive, we do not back up to the golf course, however, my sister's house down the street does. So we do have a vested interest. My family wants it to stay a golf course. We want it to be successful, but with that being said, we do not agree with the zoning change. We would rather see it be conditional use permit for it, and this is my reason. You know, hindsight is 2020, but the future is always fuzzy. If the golf course, for some reason, cannot maintain, and we all know it is losing money, one, my concern is, yeah, they could apply to go back to get single family housing, but what if, that's not what happens? And somewhere in the future, the uses, it could be an antenna, it could be a physical fitness club, I wouldn't want that in my neighborhood. You know, it's all these possibilities of what it could be that really concern me when we could do a conditional use permit and keep it as, as it is. And then as a property owner, and owning two properties in Slatto, I can, I would not, I could see where that could cause the value of this property to go down for the current owners because it does have value with a single family. And as a property owner, I don't want someone coming in and changing zoning that is detrimental to the value of my property. Usually when zoning changes take place, it's things that the property value would actually go up. You know, if you have a manufactured home and an area is becoming single family, well, that property value is going to go up every that zoning changes. I, I just, you know, I have to go with the side, I, I don't even know the owners, you know, but I would have to go on the side of, is it right to do something that's going to possibly be detrimental to someone who has invested so much into this community? Because they have clearly, clearly invested a lot into this community. Thank you.
Ron?
Thank you very much. Can I call, I have a question for that. Thank you. Don, please set it up over here so you all can see it. Can you hold that up, Ron?
No.
You have a bag under that?
No. It's okay.
You have a bag under that?
I just want to make sure, Larry, that everybody understands the history of this situation before I do my introduction and start my three minutes.
Three minutes. You are jammed by this three minutes. Okay, Ron Gubert, 1229 Sulphur Walls Road, Slatto, Texas. First of all, my admiration is with you, the Planning and Zoning Commission. You've done a very, very difficult task, and you're doing a great job, and we appreciate everything you're doing. This presentation is more about how to spend time rather than necessarily a golf course owner. We have sewer hookups that are being analyzed. I just heard Don say, don't worry for sewer hookups, sorry. And the sewer is being built. There's question about the financial situation of the sewer. We've had five meetings on this golf course. The financing of sewer, doing your, doing the Alderman's jobs, we have school problems, we have road problems. We have these maps, building a whole, this is the overlay that they're talking about with the historic district. As you can see, everything's blank. The next one is the actual use of the properties. And as, if you can see it, it's a hodgepodge down Green Street and on the Frontage Road with no definition. They're gonna have to make a determination on what the sewer hookups are in in that area. They haven't addressed it at all. I'm not gonna focus too much on that.
It might be, we can see it up here.
It's on your website. It's an interesting choice of priorities that the Alderman have chosen. They choose 137 acres out, it's not bothering anybody, not doing anything. Four point two million dollars has been invested in, and it's operating very well. In terms of the, Judy, your comment, thank you very much. I will tell you that the course is, is doing well, the addition of facilities has helped dramatically. We need you to vote again on this issue, I'm sorry about that. And I'm proud of you that we do have to vote again because the Alderman voted five zero against, in favor of changing the zoning, and it will be a vote of five zero on, on February 7th. I'm gonna pass out a, a handout to the Alderman, I've got a few for the public. It's a, it's a Wall Street Journal article, recent, it discusses closed down golf courses and what happens?
Ten minutes. Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. Okay. There are three sides to it. The golf course is open, great. The golf course, you're a chairman.
John, can I yield, can you yield?
I didn't turn any time in, sorry.
You don't have to. Oh, you, it's a public hearing.
No, three minutes per individual.
And you're, I, you're, let him have more time.
Three minutes per individual.
It's a public hearing. Anybody? You can have my time. Yeah, you can have my time, I have three minutes today, you can have my time. Can I do that? I'd like to have one.
And so you can't do that. You cannot, it's three minutes per individual, just as the gentleman said.
It's okay. I, what I, what I'm looking for is, what I'm looking for is to stop the dissent. If you would like to yield. Mine is to stop the dissent. This is about a golf course, a story about multiple golf courses. And it gives all sorts of choices. The third choice, which is leave it alone, is the best choice. Thanks for your time.
I live at 1426 Old North Road. My name is James Erbe. I've been a resident of Slatto for over thirty years, and I want to strongly encourage this board to vote for the rezoning of the golf course then to, it's a public facility, I'm not exactly sure.
Private recreational.
Private recreational. The golf course for the last thirty years has enjoyed a tax benefit, being on the market at 1.5 million dollars. These gentlemen that own it want to consider it a single family, or want to continue to keep it a single family, which would mean the property value would put it somewhere up around 10 to 11 million dollars based on the fact that part of the property sits in the flood zone. They continue to get the benefit of it being recreational instead of single family because it's a golf course and the tax appraiser looks at it as a golf course as recreational property. If they're really serious about this drive to turn it in and maintain it single family zoning, then I suggest they decide whether they want to be in the golf course business or they want to be in the real estate business. So again, I encourage you people, because they, they benefited from a ta, tremendous tax relief, that we have to pick up as independent property owners in the city. It's cost our school system millions, it's cost the village hundreds of thousands of dollars, and will continue as long as it's some recreational or public recreation, whatever the proper term is, versus being termed a zoned, single family residential. So again, I encourage the board again to vote for the rezoning and turn the property into a recreational facility. Thank you.
Paul Cox, 2716 Winter Circle Drive. In regard, for many years I lived in Houston, I was a real estate praiser. I praised special use properties such as golf courses, residential and commercial properties. And one first rule of praising any property is that the market value does not equal the cost an owner has invested. Golf courses around this country have gone down in value significantly and will continue to go down for, in the, in the past and in the near future. And I think we're, we're talking a dream if it's worth half that enough. But nevertheless, that was the side. Zoning, you know, is a tool that incorporated communities use to restrict land use for the benefit of protection and welfare for all members of that community, not just a few. I understand the village land use map has always designated the golf course land as private recreation. And it's time that that oversight of the zoning category be corrected to match what the, what the historic land use has been ever since it was developed. It, it's, it makes no sense to me to even think about changing. It makes no sense to me to even think about changing. And what, I don't believe that the argument that I heard someone say last time that the, that the, I had one of your moments there, so. That most of the land in the incorporated communities privately held, in any community, most of the land in the community is privately held, and because it's privately held, they can't do anything they want to with it. It would be a disaster for the values of this community, it would be a disaster for the economics of this community to change it from anything for golf course. And if you think about the possibility, I know last time you were intimidated and bullied by our last speaker, a couple speakers ago, that told you that they were gonna sue and take it all the way to Supreme Court. Well, the fact is that if it is changed, it is not changed, and they do sell the property, do you cover the mic? Or do sell the property, you're gonna have more lawsuits than one person could ever bring. So anyway, that's not exactly what I had written down here, but just listening to the comments that I had, I just had to narrow it down to those points.
Could you clarify your petition, please, are you for it or against it?
Oh, I'm definitely for changing it back to what it should be. Recreation, private recreation. I mean, the whole community has been built around it.
Joanne Wiley?
Hello, my name is Joanne Wiley, and I am speaking on behalf of my mother who bought property at 2017 Chisholm Trail, and I'm all about zoning and making things the way it should be, but when we look at the information about what zone, RF2, private recreation, there's a lot of different things that can be a private recreation business. I want to make sure, my concern is that it stays a golf course, it's not turned into an animal boarding or training establishment, you know, boat repair facilities, different things that's under that category of private recreation. So I want to keep it a golf course. Thank you.
Last person signed up, anyone else wish to speak?
Billy Helm, 6535 Ambro Road. First of all, I'd just like to address Jim. Jim, this is such a great kind of financial investment, I'd be expecting a check from you after this meeting, so the golf course is now sold.
Your partner just has 4.2 million dollars.
Anyway, what I would like to, I'm talking, it's my minutes.
Okay.
Okay? Real deal is, is that Don is telling you guys, if you change the zoning, it'll always be a golf course. Wrong. If the golf course, we have a lady right back here spoke, she knows exactly what's going on. If it doesn't make it, we have an option. We can either shut it down, and you guys can be looking at tumbleweezing rats, just like Chicago, or we can develop it, we can do whatever we want to with it to maintain, not trash it up, maintain what Salado is all about. It does not have to be a golf course.
Well, who's telling the truth?
This way, shut up.
Ron telling the truth that you're being successful or not?
Is this my minutes? Okay? Now you're gonna hear from Don, you're gonna hear comprehensive plan, you're gonna hear at the end of the day, cleanup, okay? We got other problems in Salado we need to resolve, past and present. Why do we need to pick on the golf course where I win? We're just, we, we as partners have brought the golf course back to where it is today. We are bringing people to Salado. Okay? We're not trying to change anything in Salado. This is my point. Why are we even here? Why aren't we fixing some of our other problems, our sewer problem, our downtown problem, our tourist problem? Why aren't we doing those things? You guys think about that?
Is there anyone else wish to speak?
Linda Reynolds, 507 Santa Rosa. I don't, I'm not related to anybody on the board, I'm not a golfer. I moved here from the East Coast where everything is run and organized, and I thought I moved to Texas where we have a lot more freedom. I have a problem with this and with the change, and it's, number one, it's dividing a community that doesn't need any more division. I think something's gotta be fixed so that we're not fighting with one another. And number two, I'm a big believer in privacy. I have my lot, my land, it's a little lot over near where wildfire is and or was, and I would not like anybody, and I paid for it, I own it, but I wouldn't like anybody just because you're the village government to come to me and say, hmm, we've decided we need to put horse barns on your land, and we're gonna take your land. It is a form of taking people's property when you change their zoning against their will. Mr. Billy Hanks Jr. wants his property up by College Hill changed to commercial, and that's a issue that we in the Historical Society and you all are gonna have to face head on. I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I'm just saying we gotta do it out in the open. We don't need any hidden agendas, we don't need any manipulation or double speak or phrases that everybody starts passing around on the phone. We need to come together and decide things as a community, what is good for the community. As I said, I'm not a golfer, and I don't, I don't think anybody on either board would claim me as a relative. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Linda Blevins, I live at 3812 Chisholm Trail, and I want to speak to the fact that you want to change it to private recreational. If anybody, and clearly one person who has come up and spoken, then I arrived late, but I heard her say you better be careful what you wish for, basically, because on private recreational, it's not just golf course. There can be some things in land that is currently not subdivided into residential lots that can suddenly appear at the end of your subdivision, and one of these can be a fraternal house, all of a sudden, I don't mean a fraternity, we're not gonna have frat boys, I'm talking about a lodge of sorts. You can have people coming and going, lodges usually get little permits, you know, all of a sudden we've got things coming in. I heard about animal boarding was one of the things that she mentioned. You better be careful what you wish for when you change it over to private recreational. And another thing I'm gonna say just from a historical perspective, I've been here for 35 years. We have gone from nine holes to 18, and people got excited then because they thought something was going to come around them, that they didn't want, that they didn't like, and guess what? It worked out beautifully. Went from 18 to 27, people got excited once again. Change is not something that people like around here, but having the golf course as private residential has always worked out because they go hand in hand. And once again, as Billy Helm pointed out to you, be careful what you wish for because if this golf course doesn't make it, you don't need to worry about having a golf course view. It's not gonna be a view you're even gonna want or that the buyer of your property is going to want. So with that, I will state my case is that I am against rezoning the area. And by the way, y'all didn't want to add this designation of private recreational to the city ordinances, so I'm going to ask you now to back up what you tried to do at that time, which is let's not do it, let's not recommend that it go private recreational. Thank you.
Ryan?
Ryan Fritsch, 2519 Hesper Way, Salado, Texas. A former member of the Billy Helm Golf Club. I have not been reinstated. Let's cut to the chase. The property is currently zoned residential. Mr. Helm owns it, and he wants to keep it as a golf course. He claims changing the zoning to private recreational golf does not change the fact that he claims he wants to keep it as such. If the golf course fails and shuts down, and Mr. Helm wants to develop it as residential property or put a slaughterhouse up there, he can come to the board and petition it be rezoned back to R1 or whatever designation he wants. Personally, I don't have a dog in the hunt because I live on hole number seven of the last nine called Springs, which by the way is not in the village, so Mr. Helm can shut that down at any time and put whatever he wants on it with the county's approval and whatever restrictions the city can put on it because it's in the ETJ. Okay? So this is a big tentstone teacup, it's been residential golf course for 30 years, let's call it what it is, golf course, and then if Mr. Helm wants to change it and develop it like he has on the other side of the fairway of number seven, then he can go ahead and request to do it. Thank you.
She's on trail, I'm sorry, she's not willing to this meeting. So I wanted to break a little bit of the perspective back of the historical use. We've gotta remember that this village existed long before there was a village, long before. And as a matter of fact, the reason that most of the original name owners came to Salado after the 70s, that area, in Hiltonville Creek, was because of the golf course, and that's where most of the house space comes from, is from the houses that are there in that area. So you've gotta think in terms of the fact that they, they built this village, and I think that if you are a business owner in this town, you should be terrified at what's being brought up right now. Because at any time, the board is telling us that with or without the P&amp;Z's consent, they're going to make decisions based on the best interest of the board at the time, not the best interest of the businesses. The businesses are what's important, and the businesses really, I mean, that's why we're getting the sewer, that's why we're doing all these things, is to promote businesses in Salado that were hurting a business like the golf course who got us here today. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody remembered that, is if you do live on Main Street and you have residence there, or if you are a business owner in this town, you should be really scared. The other thing is that zoning is, is an important aspect to what we're talking about, but somebody else brought up ordinances, and you've gotta remember that those things kinda do go hand in hand, and if you're not willing to enforce what you're zoning, right now we have so many ordinances that are being blatantly ignored, blatantly ignored in this town, and we pick and choose based on who complains, allow it, or oh, that's my friend, and so we're not gonna vogue them, and we're gonna let them do whatever they want to. So until we get somebody in here who's gonna actually make the ordinances stand up, you're wasting their time. So there's no sense in doing all that, and I do hope that whatever decisions you make today don't go like your last one, I hope the board does think behind your decisions, because you guys were put here by the board to be an advisor to their decisions, and so they should be listening to what you're saying. And so have the courage to make the right decisions and not the decisions that you gave the board as long as you're willing to make. Thanks.
My name is Carol Caldwell, and I live at 1509 Mill Creek Drive, in the, on the golf course in the flood zone. And one thing I want to say real quick is, thank you, all the owners of the golf course, because you have done an awesome job in keeping that creek clean, even after these big rains that we've had, and all this stuff is, is just a lot of garbage that has accumulated in the creek. You have kept it clean, I've seen it, I've washed it in my backyard, and I want to thank you so much because in all these big rains that we've had, when was the last flood? 2010? It's 2019? It has not flooded, and it's because of you cleaning up that creek, and I want to thank you for it, okay? And also I'm not for rezoning, I don't even know why we are here. I have not got a clear, and I don't know if anybody else has got a clear reason for rezoning the golf course. Has anybody explained it to us? It hasn't been explained to me, and I think we need to just, you know, if it isn't broken, you know, don't, you know, just leave it like it is. They're doing a great job, it's like that one lady said, we have a lot of other things to work on in this city, and we need to think about that. So I'm just telling you all that, I don't know why I'm here because, I don't even know how we got here, why are we wanting to rezone, and there's no explanation of why, nobody's told us that. Even that man came up and asked if you'd explain it, nobody has. And then he got up here to explain it, and you booted it out for after three minutes. That's what we're here for. So I don't really think you're doing what we're asking you to do. I'm confused, I don't have a clear picture. Okay? Thanks.
Is there anyone else wish to comment?
My name is Tom Moore. I live at 1162 Green Lane. I've lived in Salado, what, Ambro, 18 months? Maybe? My family moved here because we liked the small town atmosphere, that's what we grew up in, both my wife and I, and we like that. What I see tonight is, or what I've seen over the time that I've been here, is we have a relationship that's broken. We have a relationship with the Board of Aldermen who don't understand your role and don't care about your role. Now, they may care, but if I vote against what you advise, means it doesn't care. I was on P&amp;Z in Harker Heights when I lived there for 17 years. I was a former executive director of the IT Department, City of Colleen, so I've seen this in the last 20 years a whole lot. What scares me the most is that we're in this situation because we've always done it this way. We haven't fixed a right, fixed wrong to a right, but we're here. But we're not thinking about the people, the benefit to people, and I'm not talking about owners, I'm talking about people. We're not talking about, we're not thinking about what's important. You killed two tonight already. My thought is, you kill this one and come back with something that makes sense. Because the current zoning doesn't make sense. The proposed zoning... The proposed zoning doesn't make sense. So, if we wanna continue down this road of not making sense, I wonder why I moved here. And if I'm one of those, sorry, young, just turned sixty, young families that's moving in the area, what are you gonna do to ones who come behind me? Because Salado's growing, you haven't looked lately, not just the village, but the ETJ. The whole area, now that thirty-five is fixed, it's gonna boom even faster. But if you can't get that relationship between you, the Board of Aldermen, and all these people sitting out here, then you've really messed up. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to comment? Public area is closed. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Motion's been made, second to the die.
Any, any with a second?
Question's been called, all in favor of denying, if you're not in. All opposed?
Mr. Redmond, Jason, we'll go to the Board of Aldermen, first meeting.
Moving on to the next item.
Discuss and consider possible action in part of the proposed concept plan associated with a request for approximately fifty-four hundred feet of maintenance. There's a difficult subdivision on the left corner of the intersection of Royal Street and Smith Branch Road. Please take the discussion outside.
Thank you, sir. This is for the concept plan for the Royal Street development. The applicant has presented the concept plan to us. Our engineer, John Simsick, has reviewed the concept plan against the subdivision ordinance and has recommended approval. Some things to note on this concept plan, the applicant is going to be requesting to be annexed into the village city limits. As such, he's gonna be requesting that we provide him with sewer and the new wastewater system. In such, he's also going to be asking that we present a waiver to the Board of Aldermen for the lot sizes. As it exists right now, the subdivision ordinance and our zoning ordinance do not allow for anything smaller than half acre lots. That is partially as a result of needing septic systems. As this will have a sanitary sewer system from the village, he is asking that he have approximately quarter acre lots. And so, that is something to be considered today, and that will also be going to the Board of Aldermen, who are a recommending body today on the concept plan. The concept plan in your packet does have lots on it, however, the larger version out here, if you'd like to take a look, I have it laid out for you. In a concept plan, we aren't really looking at the lot layout. What we are looking at is, does the overall development meet the general requirements such as the number of entrances and exits? Are they gonna be able to have water and fire? We're looking at street connections, those types of things. So, not really looking at lots here, just looking at the overall concept. I'd be more than happy to answer your questions. Yes.
How do we have to show the three phases? Indicate the three phases.
The two are covered. So, you've got a potential, and mind you, in a concept plan, exact alignment can change. It's looking at does it have the connection? So, we've got three connections in and out of the subdivision. One right here off of Smith Branch, one here off of Smith Branch, and then we're going to have another one towards Connect with the Orange. I'm gonna question, we can't hear.
Who I'm hearing?
I will repeat you just a second, if I could just look at the large one. So, as I said, one of the things we look at in a concept plan is whether or not they're gonna meet our ingress and egress requirements. And so, this concept plan does at this time, it is a three-phase cockroach plan. And we're gonna have a connection off of Smith Branch, another connection off of Smith Branch, and then a connection to Whispering Oaks, which is the existing street in the village.
And the Whispering Oaks connection is at the very end of the development in Phase One?
Yes. No. There we go, Whispering Oaks. Absolutely. I'm sorry, one more time?
Fifty-four lot, you're claiming that they presented as quarter acre now or half acre?
We are not looking at lot size right now, because on a concept plan, we don't. What we are, so, if this applicant came back and said he did not want quarter acre lots, he could do that. He could come in here and say, I wanna make these three acre lots. What we're looking at is the overall concept plan, does this concept plan meet our requirements? Now, he is asking for a waiver which will allow for quarter acre lots, so.
Minimal.
Minimum.
So, what you're doing is you're setting floor running, in fact, he can, he can go higher if he wants, but the floor would be a quarter acre, as we said. And so, you know, in the past, the village, you really, in concept plans, you don't put the lot configurations, and you don't show those, because it has a tendency to stall the development down the road. So, you're gonna be seeing future concept plans without those lots, in the past, for some reason, they were included, but you really shouldn't do that. So, it implies, the concept plan implies with all the subdivision code departments, with the exception of the lots. Any seeking a variance to that?
And what will happen is, this recommendation goes to the Board of Aldermen. If the Board of Aldermen approve this concept plan, we will then see what we call the construction or preliminary flat come in for his Phase One. When we review that, that's when we start looking at our minimum lot sizes, we start looking at frontage, we start looking at individual connections, those types of things, when we see those preliminary construction flats.
We'll also be looking at his septic, there's septic designs as far as wastewater system, and of course, the water will also be looked at by the engineers too. He's just proving up through his concept plan that he'll have access to water.
How about public park space? Section four point four of our subdivision ordinance says that there should be adequate public park space.
The applicant has the option to provide that public park space or pay a fee in lieu of. The last time I spoke with him, I believe they were contemplating paying the fee in lieu of. But, but he has that choice, and that is something that he can most definitely decide after the concept plan in phase.
Does he have the vote or have the right to buy his way out?
In the world, as far as the park goes, yeah.
Yes.
Parkland does catch.
So, you could give that for some money, but that won't.
Well, the concept is the fact that you're gonna get that money, that money's obligated to be set aside in a dedicated fund in order to be used to meet the park needs that can be generated by that facility, either on a new park in that area or on your existing park structure. You'll also see that, we don't have it in our code right now, but there's been discussion about the idea of coming forth with even some type of traffic impact fee scenario for the form, where they would pay for any type of widening of roads that would be needed, or in lieu of that contribution back to the city to go widen the roads.
Is that park, is that standard park language?
Very typical.
We can't change that.
Well, I mean, you can always change it, it's an ordinance, but, but the parkland dedication concept is pretty typical.
Because most subdivisions now have dedicated parks.
Some do and some don't, the one, the one that we've gotten a dedication on, from looking at the history, has been in the land, the residential development just north, they paid in lieu of that.
Well, that's a very small, unusual subdivision. This is, this is pretty significant, and they would benefit from having a park. I would, I would definitely like to look at changing that ordinance.
Any more questions, personally? I'll entertain a motion to approve, or disapprove?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the concept plan in a second.
And does that include the variance requested, right, of quarter acre lots as well?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Question?
Question's been called for, all in favor? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you all.